This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, at this point, I opened the March 2nd Town of Southampton Planning Board meeting. It's being recorded to the cloud. It's being televised in East Hampton Cable Media Channel 191. Paul Forgot will not be joining us tonight because he had to work late and could not be with us. Nevertheless, we're going to continue in tonight's first agenda item. Oh, by the way, our new recording secretary, Dan.
Hello?
Who I or we appointed maybe last June?
Yeah, we just didn't get the, it's my fault. I, I didn't take the, the communication right to start doing it. So we're doing it now. We're good.
So it was brought to our attention that he's the recording secretary. It's on the town website. So I guess it's time for him to start. You know, I have to apologize because I have a lot of the minutes done and posted. They just haven't been approved. And one of these days coming up very soon, I'm going to be sending you a lot of minutes. They're not long because our meetings haven't been long. And we're just going to have to officially approve them as we go along. But going forward, we'll try to see if we can do them at least once a month to catch up rather than doing six months at a time. But I do have them posted on the website or that my town government, with the exception, probably the last couple of meetings, but I'm not, I'm not too terribly far back. First agenda item Attorney Gary LaCory, who I see is on the screen there. He has a request for the Gil Farm Estates to bond, performance bond release for lots four and seven. Attorney LaCory, are you there?
Yes, Gary LaCory, I represent Gil Farmer Estates Incorporated with that nine lot subdivision. It was approved in 2019. We started the construction. We were a little bit slow. Anthony LaCory, the developer, was sick in 2019 and subsequently did pass in 2021. But the progress has been made. The, the base coat of the road has been put in. We're ready to put in the, the finished coat when the weather warms up after a winter of the base coat existing as it was. And we plan to put the, the finished coat down sometime in May or, or June, which will be just about a year after it was initially installed. And with the sidewalks on the southern side of the, the road as you're, as you go in from the, the main road. So we're looking just for, we've got two lots under purchase and sale agreement, lots four and seven. We're looking for a release from the, the Performance Bond Covenants that were recorded in 2020. I can give you the book and page if you need it.
I believe I have it here. If you'll just confirm it for me just a minute. I got the Performance Bond, but I don't seem to have, maybe it's in the other file at Town Hall, but go ahead and give me the.
13563, page 152. And it's a six-page document recorded at the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds on March 13th, 2020. So we, we would need a release of lots four and seven from the Performance Bond Covenants for those two lots. Looks like we probably have two more lots coming up, and I'll put that on maybe for the next time. But we're, we're going to be in good shape from a construction standpoint in terms of getting this done. We'll get the finished coat on this spring or early summer and get the sidewalk in at the same time. Then we'll have the lots pinned and we'll be ready to go to convey the, the street itself to the town and to comply with the, the approval, with the subdivision approval that was issued in 2019. So I think we're in pretty good shape. We're just waiting for the weather to clear here to get the finished coat down. But I, we're asking that lots four and seven be released from that, from the Performance Covenants that were dated March 13th, 2020 and recorded at the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds.
Personally, I don't have a problem with that because that's two, the first two out of the nine lots in that subdivision. However, I wouldn't be pushing the envelope Attorney Gary too far because of the road not being completed and the utilities and such. Whatever work has been done and has to be inspected. So and I understand we've got, you know, seven lots left there and there's probably value that probably exceeds the work to be done, but I would rather not have you be too eager to sell too many of them without the road being completed.
No, I understand that. And, you know, I, obviously these two are not a big, I don't see that as a big issue for the, for the planning board today. And I, I know that probably another two wouldn't be, but we're not going to do it immediately. But these two will help the subdivision get going and we're, we're going to be done with, you know, this, everything else. The storm drains, the electric's in, everything is really, we're very close to finishing up. You know, within a 60-day period, once we can get the, once we can get the finished coat down.
And I trust you're going to keep John Furman, a V H.
Oh, we have to keep him informed about everything. Yeah, that's part of our.
Because he's the peer reviewer on it.
Absolutely. And Randy Wilson, who is the, the general contractor that's doing the road work and everything, has worked along with him well. And I don't think there's been any problems and we'll get this done. I think it should be done in a 60-day window, once we can get the finished coat down and then get the lots pinned and get ready to convey the, the fee interest in the real estate to the town and move on from there.
All right. Do I have a motion? Any discussion from the board or questions from the board?
So question, how much would we be reducing it or we just release those two?
Release those two.
Just, yeah, there's nine lots, there's nine lots under the covenant and there's requesting two to be released.
Okay. Yeah. I have no, no questions or comments.
Any motion on that?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Dan, do I have a second? Motion by Dan and seconded by Sarah. And all in favor, say yes in your name.
Omar, yes. Sign yes.
LaValle, yes.
Damon, yes. 400 approved. All right. Thank you Attorney LaCory and we'll be talking to you down the road.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right.
Down the road, I got the joke.
Down the road on Gil Farm. Next, I had a question mark for the D L T A update because Ken Komea, who is with us tonight, but didn't think he was going to, but his meeting got canceled because he has other commitments on the first Wednesday of month. He is here to discuss the the D L T A grant. We were allowed to do some work for the affordable housing and inclusionary zoning. And I'm glad you're here, Ken, because Richard Harris, whom you probably are familiar with, is here also. And you can kind of, in between Sarah and Cindy and Dan, who've been involved in the housing component that's been going on, the project that you most recently completed last year, that you, you can kind of lead on this and discuss how we're going to approach that. And Richard, so we're not going to be duplicating any work that we need to pay you for and see what Ken can cover under that and what the most important aspects of that will be. So Ken, go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, Board, all of you. Richard, good to see you.
Hi, Ken Komea. This is Cindy. How are you?
Paul said, I've actually worked, I think, with everyone in various capacities, either through the discussions with the master plan a couple of years ago and this past year with the housing production plan, which we are finishing up and will be before the board at some point for an approval. But what I will say is, I know that the inclusionary zoning was something, the inclusionary zoning bylaw was something that the board wanted to look at. I know that, I think Paul, in the submission to the PVPC, there was going to be some, some coordination or participation by the housing authority, whether or not that is specific to bylaws or context for how the bylaws are drafted. I think the planning board can determine that. But what I will say, I think, is that, and, and I think at that, at that previous housing authority meeting too, there was a discussion about maybe some other housing-related bylaws that could be explored and not only the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And I, I leave that to the board. I think that's doable. And I, the way that I have usually worked on zoning bylaw amendments is especially, it's not a lot of money, but it will be to, you know, go through best practices, go through conversations with the board. And, you know, if you want me to work with the housing authority or create some sort of coordination in a joint meeting, have those conversations and figure out what the, what the product will be. I think the product's going to be a set of bylaws, if not an inclusionary zoning bylaw, maybe some other ones. But it has also been identified by you, Paul, and by some members of the planning board that have been participating in the housing production plan, that working with Richard, just to ensure that there's no duplication of efforts is very important. Richard.
Ken, I know the work has to be done by the end of December of this year, right?
Yes.
They got a situation that the select boards contracted with General Code to do codification of their bylaws.
Okay.
Including the zoning bylaw. So we're going to have to hold off on codification that work we've been doing. So the question I have is in terms of completing your work by end of December, until they have the format that General Code has come out with, they won't have a format that you can use to draft a bylaw that can go to town meeting.
That's fair.
Okay. Cause I want to be sure that everybody's on board with that. Cause that's, I know you typically want something acted on and that may be a slight holdup.
Yeah, I know. And thanks for that context. I think that's very helpful. Especially because you want probably also one language. But Richard, I think, is the, is the suggestion that Gen Code will be updating the zoning bylaw. But any work that you're currently doing to help refine the bylaw will be happening after the fact. So it's going to be a full, like, the town is going to vote on a new set of bylaws.
We've been, we just found out recently that the select board engaged General Code and then that was including the zoning bylaw. That's like within the past two weeks.
Oh, okay.
So that has put a hold on work they're doing because the last thing you want to do is take a rewrite of zoning bylaw to town meeting, have it approved, and then have General Code come in with a new rewrite of the bylaw in different format the next year. Cause then you have three versions in two-year period. And that, that does work for anybody.
All right. So I have a question then for both of you gentlemen. All right. So the existing bylaws as they are, say we weren't going to do anything with them whatsoever and they came in with E code. They're going to put them in their format. Now formatting to me means print style, breaking them down and code codification, blah, blah, blah. Why can't you rewrite the bylaw and then they take that information and then, and, and put it in, and put it in their system? Are you, are you telling me the language is different, how they see it versus how we see it?
There's a couple of things. One, if they had not started on it, I'd say, yeah, what we would do is we would take what we've done, amend the existing bylaw and have them incorporated in there. But they, they apparently are at the point that they've already drafted it. It's going to the committee for review in this month based on the email.
Well, I didn't understand. Maybe you understood it, but I didn't. This whole thing, to be quite honest with you, really took me back quite a bit on my pins when I went to the select board and I didn't have time to digest it until after the fact. And when I got to the bottom of it, it kind of unnerved me a bit because here we've been working on bylaws and revisions for the better part of four to five years. And there's, there's a bylaw committee in town that chose to go this E code route, but we weren't privy to that information, which I, I don't know where the communication breakdown came, but it's, I'm not happy.
I would be beyond unhappy if I were on the planning board with this. It's spent a lot of your time, your money. And while that money's not totally wasted, it's going to have to be, the work product's going to have to be massaged, incorporated. The problem you have is since they've already started doing the work and apparently are substantially in, into the process, if you took something town meeting now and amended the existing bylaw, they would then have to go back and redo what they've already done. Cause a change is so substantial. And they would, they would increase, likely increase the cost of the town of this initial work. The far better thing to do is let them come up with their format. Let them come up with their draft code. We can then begin work, assuming town meeting is going to accept the E code. And you've got to remember, the planning board is going to have total public hearing on the E code 360 regarding the zoning bylaw under chapter 48, section five. So once that's done, then we can begin taking the work that's been done to incorporate into that format. And one of the things I oftentimes do, or they should be doing, is if there's something in the zoning bylaw that is contrary to state law, they should be flagging that for removal. So that's where you get into, yeah, it could be different. It could be not only the format and structure, but also some of the substance could be a little bit different.
All right. Well, I guess we've got the gist of it. Sarah, did you have a comment there before?
I just had a question. I mean, I saw all these emails, you know, going back and forth about the E code. I didn't know if Paul, you or Richard could just, I guess I was a little confused as to, it's just, there's been the bylaw committee, which they've had these meetings on certain different bylaws. There was the noise. There was different things I've seen meetings for. So is that sep, totally separate from this company who's doing the reformatting? Or is it one and the same?
No, they're going to do the entire general and zoning, right?
Yeah.
Right. So it's just the formatting. It's not like making decisions about, we're going to allow six of this instead of 10 of this.
No, 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 no.
Listen, I'm going to interrupt now. Paul, I'm getting texts from Chris Falls. She's watching. I'm asking her to join because there's some disconnect here on the understanding. I'm hoping that she will join this because she's got some clarification. There's some things that are not quite correct from what we're discussing right now. So I just texted her the, the Zoom code and also the password. So she, I can't interpret what she's saying. I can read what she's saying, but there's some misunderstandings here about what's going on with the E code. It's very complex. And I'm hoping, Chris, you'll join. She says all bylaws as they are written will be given to E code and they divide it up in their format. And she's trying to get on right now. They don't change the language. You understand that part? They don't change the language.
Yeah, we know that.
And something that I think Richard said was, at least she thought it could be clarified a little bit more. And there did go, you know, this part about going on the warrant last summer. Yeah.
Until, until she joins us, I've got to move on here. So let's just put that E code on hold for a minute. But Ken, you're, you're familiar with it and obviously Richard does.
Yeah. And I think what, what will end up happening is, you know, we can at least have a, I think everyone is aware how a bylaw is written. There's a purpose and there's all these other subheadings under a bylaw. We can format it accordingly. Once we get the language, I think, solidified. But I think what I'd like to do is just work with the planning board. And I asked the planning board if there are certain aspects or certain bylaws that you would like me to explore. Considering, I know the inclusionary zoning bylaw is the one that has been identified in the submission. However, I think, you know, if there are other housing-related zoning bylaws specifically, mixed use particularly in your residential or your village center area, or if there are some definitions you want refined, that, that would be good to know. And I don't know what Richard has done with the board up until this point. But if he hasn't touched housing yet and those related to housing, you know, we can take a stab and figure out what the town may be, or what the planning board may be wanting to put forward.
That's why I would hope two of you would, you know, have a conversation because we haven't touched housing very much at all, right, Richard?
No, no, we've been focusing on formatting and codification.
And Sarah, go ahead.
So I just kind of going back to what we had, I had taken a little excerpt from the housing production plan. And Ken, we talked about this a little bit at the last Housing Production Plan meeting, but we'd had on there the inclusionary zoning bylaw, of course, and then accessory apartments bylaw. And then these aren't specific bylaws, but reviewing apartments in the mixed-use district, cluster development with mixed residential types, and then a 40R district, which I don't know that that's something. I think that might be above and beyond. I, I guess I'd be looking for others' opinion on that one. But I think the accessory apartments, taking a look at that in addition to the inclusionary zoning would be a good starting place personally.
Also multifamily?
Yes.
And also didn't the discussion come up about properties in town that are now pre-existing non-conforming that we might be able to look at some properties in some of the zoning districts that are non-conforming now that we could put housing, affordable housing on our smaller unit or a unit, a smaller house to create, create some more housing options.
That's a good list. Yeah.
I think that's partly addressed in one of the items Larry did on a lot of averaging. And Ken could use that as the approach for that. I don't, I don't see any way the 40R could be done unless you got about 25, 30,000 or the D L T A. Cause I know from doing two 40R districts with Larry in South Hadley, it takes a lot of time, our resources.
Well, we had that back in 2010 or 12, but maybe it was, it was around that period, maybe nine or 10, where the PVPC did, had a D L T grant for 40R and it stopped dead cold because of no infrastructure along the college highway corridor.
Yeah, it's identified in your plan. So.
No sewer. So.
Okay. That's a good list.
So we'll go there and I'll have you, if, if you have questions and Richard, maybe if you could send a concise list of what not to cover that we've already covered or any duplication that you see that we don't want to double spend anymore.
No, what I would do is let Ken address what he's going to be able to cover and he, he'd let us know what he can cover.
Right.
I think the, the items that Sarah identified as well as the item that Paul identified with multifamily and the pre-existing non-conforming and trying to figure out how to utilize those parcels for housing. I think that's, that's a good list.
The multifamily is easy to address because you basically throw out the existing provisions and totally write something new. Cause existing provisions are discriminatory.
Now, as far as the inclusionary is concerned, you think you're going to be able to cover that in, in your realm too, or?
I think with regards to inclusionary, I don't know, has the, again, I think this might be a conversation, a bigger conversation on, on how the board has been looking at the inclusionary zoning bylaw. I am where I've worked with the town of Hadley and they're having a deep dive into their rules and regulations with regards to, or not rules and regulations, yeah, with regards to payment in lieu of. But, and it, they're almost there, but it, it has been a long slog. I think what, what could be beneficial is to see how they're looking at it and then offer that to the town. This is particular because they had recently amended when they used to have, I think it, the inclusionary zoning kicked in when it was 10, 10 units, nine. But they had moved it down to six and are now looking for ways to feed their Affordable Housing Trust Fund. But the thing is I can offer something and I, I don't think that there's any harm in that. And, you know, work with the board to find the proper balance. If the inclusionary zoning provision doesn't work for the, for the board, then, you know, we'll figure out where to go from there. But.
It was my sense, Ken, that the inclusionary probably would be on the bottom of the list only because the other items are doable and, and we can kind of get those on the books sooner than the inclusionary, which is very convoluted. I mean, the other ones are probably easier to accomplish. And if we don't get the inclusionary, fine. But I think if you want to create some housing, you've got to do it with the, the assets we have that can be converted fairly soon rather than worry about subdivisions in nine, six, 10, 12 units. All right. I'll let you go because you don't want to be involved in the rest of this for the rest of the night because you've got to get to work now and the other.
All right. Well, thank you, Board. Good to see everyone. Good to see you, Chris. And we will talk soon.
Thank you, Ken. All right. Now we're going to get back to E code 360 and I want to compare, we'll have Chris Falls from the select board give her version of it and then I'll have Mr. Harris critique that. Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Thanks. Yeah, that Chris from Select Board, but I'm also on the bylaws committee. So I just wanted to clarify something. I don't know how communication did not happen, but this was a proposal that came to the bylaws committee from the town clerk about a year ago and got put on the warrant for the town meeting back in June of 21 and to actually invest in the E code system for, I understood it to be our general bylaws. That's what it was aiming to do. So basically it was to fund the purchase of the E360 software and, you know, do the, do the work to do all that conversion. So right now, I, I have learned that the zoning bylaws are being incorporated into that because I saw a table of contents that had them just listed there. But I have not seen any further detail than that. All we have done with the general bylaws is provide the entire 30 or so general bylaws that we have in the format that they currently are and have been passed and improved at previous town meetings and Attorney General. And have been passed and improved at previous town meetings and attorney general, et cetera. That's gone to E codes hands and that staff is. Ordering them in some more logical order. They're bundling them according to category and they're. Kind of subdividing, the way I understand it, they're subdividing some of the text and putting in headings. And putting in searchable words so that they will be more user friendly and searchable. They're not changing any of our wording. Uh, they're just, they are doing the reformatting, kind of what, like what you alluded to, Paul. And we're still working on new bylaws. We're not stopping writing new bylaws, um. So we're continuing in our usual narrative format that gets presented to town meeting. Uh, until we are told that we shouldn't do that anymore, but E three code is just simply. Converting the old stuff that we have into their, their format. Now going forward. Like I say, we're, we're still continuing like we have been doing, um, and we've got four or five that we hope to be on the warrant for. For May and they will be in the typical format the residents usually see. So. I guess I would advise Paul that you and Lucy maybe need to have a chat and understand whatever this has been presented because we're not the. Liaison, the bylaws committee hasn't been, and Lucy's been the person in contact with the, the team at E three sixty and that's, that's about all I can tell you, but. Um, I know we were convinced about the value of it, given, uh, what we saw from other towns and many other towns have signed on to this program. So. That was basically all I can tell you. Thanks.
I, I, I've got an email from a, uh. Deb Tzinski, who is the editor of this, uh, general code.
Yep, that's her name. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that would be her.
And her email says, uh, this is the update. We are going to be finalizing the manuscript for the new town code and preparing the editorial. And legal analysis in March. The material should be ready for the committee's review by the end of March. I will provide you with more information when, when we get closer to that date, so. What, what that entails, I haven't any idea.
Yeah, I'm not totally sure. I can tell you that bylaws is actually having their meeting tomorrow morning, um. And maybe we can also reach out to Lucy and just find out some more clarity on that as well. Um, from the town clerk perspective, but, um, that's about all I know as well. So thanks, though.
Richard comment?
I can only speak from my experience when we had, we had, first of all, let me say ECO three sixty, the great program. I think it's terrific. South Halle went there about four or five years ago. And it was, I think, is a really great program because. Especially a zoning and general bylaws into it, somebody need to research on. Pre-preservation and it'll bring up not just. A general bylaw, but the zoning bylaw references to it as well, and that is really helpful to anybody doing the work. Uh, I think the value of it is, can, cannot be overstated, um, but from my experience with them. They do a legal review too, and. I know in South Hadley, they identified at least one part of the zoning bylaw that we thought was. Not legally permissible anymore, and they said it's not, and they took it out. Uh, that's part of the legal review. Um, because remember the bylaws will go to the attorney general for approval. After they're adopted. If general code is codifying it and they see something that doesn't meet the legal standard. They're going to need to raise that issue to have that removed. Otherwise, we can go to attorney general's office. Or prove that they're going to strike it.
Can, can I add one thing? Before any of our, our bylaws get put on a town warrant, they go through our general council, our legal council. In Boston, which is not the E three sixty, it's the KP law people. They look at everything. And they're the ones that are supposed to catch some of these things like the MGL, et cetera. Um, we haven't had the experience yet to use E three sixty to know whether they would find a discrepancy there. There is a legal review, but my understanding is it doesn't. It doesn't supplant or replace what KP law would do in terms of their review. Um, and they, they see it first, it goes on the warrant. If it's approved, then the attorney general gets it and. Between those two offices, I would certainly think E three sixty would have a responsibility at least to talk to us before they simply. Wiped it out.
Just wipe it out. What they would do is in the legal review notify you that we've identified this. And the reason I say this, for instance, I'm not sure how old your bylaws are, but, uh, when they did ours. We had zoning provisions dating back nineteen forty-six. Well, what you could do in nineteen fifty-five, you can't do in twenty fifteen. Sometimes the laws changed, case law changed, and you need to update it. Some of those provisions had not been updated. So yes, and. Uh, town council in twenty fifteen was said, no, you can't do that. But town council in nineteen fifty-five may have said, it's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, no, gotcha. That's, that's a valid point for sure. Yep.
So that's, that's where the general code review comes in terms of legal review is you've got old of bylaws that. Past legal muster at that time, but don't pass them today, um, and, um. So that's part of the issue. And the other aspect is that we have been working on is exactly what they're doing. We've been working on reformatting and codification. If I had known back in September. That general code was doing this, I would advise the planning board at that time, don't worry about formatting codification at all. Let's just focus on substantive changes that we could then put in your standard format and take them. So we had almost all my time have been focused on reformatting and codification. So that's where the issue comes in is that the board spent a lot of time, money. Doing sa- is essentially what general code is doing is in regards to zoning bylaw. Um, so, and given the fact the way we've done it before me, Larry Smith worked on it as well. The interrelationship in the changes are such that you can't just. Take this to town meeting. Because. As, uh, Paul noted, their update in case they're going to be getting their work to. The bylaw committee in March. Well, if we start doing changes, what they've already reviewed, edited. Formatted is going to be different from what we're now taking, what we'd be taking. So my suggestion to the board is that. Yes, we look at the substantive elements of the bylaw. But wait to take anything to town meeting to after we get ECO three sixty. So we make sure that when we make changes to it, it will fit in. It won't require them to redo the work they've done.
Yeah, that, that could be valid. I, I think, um, just a suggestion would be too that. Since you've got that email or whatever from, uh, from the person at E three sixty, maybe it's worth just having her clarify what that really means, because. Um, you know, we'll try and do it too from the bylaw committee, but I think that's kind of a big. Statement and I, I didn't get the impression that they were that far along in editing anything frankly, but I could be very wrong on that, so. It's worth clarifying for sure so that nobody spends a lot of extra time on this. So sorry about the miscommunication. I'm not sure how it happened, but it's, it's been out there since June, um, so.
Yeah, and I said, E, ECO three sixty is a great program and I highly recommend it. It's. It'd be very helpful to town.
Yeah, good. Thanks, guys. I'll sign off now.
Uh, one question for you before you sign off. Are they also going to do the sub regs?
Sorry, do the what?
Are they also incorporating regulations such as subdivision, subdivision regulations?
Um, that I'm not sure of. I don't know. I don't know.
I'll, I'll reach out to that person, um.
That's one thing we, we have them codify into the South Hadler bylaw code. Were, were DPW regulations, Board of Health regulations, subdivision regulations, so they were all in one.
Yeah. Yeah, would, that would be a good idea. I mean, the, the idea is to make some things easy to find for the residents and searchable and. Logical and all that kind of stuff, because they're kind of really scattered in terms of the general bylaws right now.
And it's very frequent that, that people will say, well, there's own bottle or general bottles that need to do this. I had no idea there's Board of Health regulation.
Sure.
Subdivision regulations that required X over here.
Yeah, yeah, you definitely need consistency. So, yep, questions to ask. I'm not sure. I know. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So given that, um. I guess we're kind of at a standstill now until I find out just exactly. What they're, uh, they're going to be presenting for town meeting.
If they're, they're this close. I would like to see at least the draft. Because I, I want to see if there, if there, what, if there's anything they're taking out. Um, it may be that this is a, a point. That some things that you've worked on, you can have them incorporate. For instance. If you look at the definition section that Larry did, one of the things he did was he took definitions from other parts of the zoning bylaw. And add, put them into the definition section. Well, it may be that when you look at the draft, they've done that or we can ask them to do that. So that saves you that hassle down the road. Um, if they were not working on the zoning yet. I was going to suggest that is one thing that you could take to town meeting. Was, was to simply consi- amend the existing bylaw to consolidate all the definitions into one article. Um, there are a few little things like that Larry and I talked the other day about, and there are a few things that we thought, yeah, you could do that. If they hadn't already done work on zoning bylaw, if they've already done work on zoning bylaw, then they would require them to rework that. If, if didn't make any changes.
Do you think it's conceivable they could do that much since the contract was only signed in June? Could they pull that off in six months?
Oh, yeah, that, that's, um, because. Yeah, they could easily pull some of those things off pretty easily. Uh, they've got significant staff, good, great computer capacity. And, yeah, I, and you've got somebody who's, their job is editor of a document. They. Can do things a lot quicker than few who don't do editing as their lifeblood.
All right, well, I will then get in contact with this person, um, in conjunction with Lucy's permission. And see if I can get a draft or get a more definitive explanation of what they've accomplished. Uh, because they, that email to me is kind of vague. Manuscript.
Yeah, um.
Editorial legal, uh, manuscript for the new town code and preparing the edit editorial and legal analysis.
Yeah, the legal analysis would, should identify if they saw things in the bylaw that need to be. Rewritten because they're not consistent with current case law statute, statutory law. But.
Now, why, if, if they're, if they're, uh. Throwing things out because they're illegal or whatever, they must have legal consultants on board.
General code has, has attorneys there. They're not throwing things out. They're advising you of what.
Right. So why, why then would that still have to go to town council? Are they just, is that just another safety valve?
Anytime you take anything to your town meeting, your town council should be reviewing it.
Got you.
Um, because general code is not going to defend you if. Somebody sues you over provision of E code, your town council will. And you'll, and you'll be sure town council is the one that, uh, is comfortable with what, with the changes being made. I know in one particular instance in, uh, South Hattie's code where they identified something. Our town council rented by the attorney general's office and attorney general's office won't tell you yes or no, but what they did say. We had that provision come before us today, it's less likely that we would approve it. Which is another polite way of saying, don't include it in there.
Um, all right. Keep reading your emails. I'll be sending you, uh. Updates as I get along here.
So the good news for you is that with this, I won't be spending as much time. So your invoices for me would be very low.
Well, that's not a bad thing. Um, I'm just, I'm just, uh, I, I won't rehash it again about.
It's, it's perplexing.
Yeah, it. Before the meeting started, we recorded your, your availability now will be limited.
Um, as of March twenty-first until the first part of May. I'll only be available, uh, via virtual meetings and probably from March twenty-first till. I would say April seventh, I would not expect to be available hardly long. Um, I'm having surgery on my right arm and.
Right. So we won't bug you for a couple of weeks then, and then after the seventh. It'll pretty much be only by Zoom, right?
Right. I'll email you during that period of I feel like I can, my arms function enough that I can feel comfortable. Email, I'll email you letting they know what status is.
So to get this straight, for all intents and purposes, we have nothing that's going to go to town meeting in May.
Correct.
Correct. That's what I thought.
That, that's, that's my recommendation to you is.
No, I, I, I under- I understand, I. Guess we're just have to keep plugging away at this.
And, and just because they're going to have something ready by end of March doesn't mean they're going to be ready for this to go town meeting in May, maybe. In, in South Hattie's case, I think we took it to a special town meeting in January one year. Um, and that was the big items was the general bylaw adoption and the zoning bylaw adoption.
Are you of the opinion that we can have anything that already saved for the fall town meeting?
I think we might be able to, because we'll know the format and structure and we'll know what substantively is in there. And we might be able to adopt some items, um, where I take a look at it. Because for instance, if they weren't working on this now, one of the things I would be suggesting to you is. Amend the existing zoning bylaw to add another section on site plan review. So you don't, because you don't have that and now we just add a section at the end and that would have been fine. Uh, incorporating, moving definitions from one section of bylaw to the. Uh, definition section, depend on what they've done, how they structured it, those things we may, might be able to do for the fall town meeting. We have to take a look and see what, what they're doing.
Paul, did you already schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, I've got, no, I haven't advertised it. I've had it posted on the town website, but I, I'll take that down. It was scheduled for March thirtieth.
Basically, once Paul told me about the, uh, three sixty, I stopped working on stuff for the town meeting. On the public hearing calls, I don't want you to spend more money than you already had if we're not going to be doing anything.
So, so I have two questions related to that. One is, um, even if the codification isn't final. Can the draft as we know it with the, you know, sort of the substantive parts of it, can that go to a public hearing? With, before the codification. And the second question is, should we do the public hearing kind of in. You know, sort of steps, you know, utilize the, post the public hearing, see if people want to come. And do part of what's already been accomplished.
No, no, because you've, the amendment has to state what you're amending. For instance, if you're amending section five of the zoning bylaw, article five zoning bylaw, it needs to stay there. Well, the codification may change that to a different section altogether. Uh, so you need to know what the substantive, what the structure is that you're amending, how you're amending it. Uh, so at this point in time, we can't, in the fall, we might be in a better position to do something, but not at this point in time. Now, it may be that you want to have a meeting, a public meeting sometime to get public input on. Conceptually, some of these topics, topic issues, some changes we want to make. And before you actually put them in the format for a, uh, uh, bylaw amendment.
You can do, you can do that in a public meeting rather than a hearing?
Yeah, you could, you do a hearing if you want to, but in terms of, instead of making a formal, a hearing on a proposed zoning bylaw, bylaw amendment. A hearing for the purpose of getting input on proposed topics for zoning bylaw amendment. And get public input on that.
Um, you're, you're mentioning the fall. Paul, do we usually have town meetings in the fall? I think maybe just.
Oh, I've seen them. I've seen them in October, November, December. I've seen them in October, November, December, you know. Depends, depends what's on the docket, I guess. Um, you know, and sometimes the following has gone to January, so.
And also depends when some, some communities restrict their fall town meetings to financial items. Because they've had the um, free cash certified and the men financial article budget for that. Uh, but some allow other stuff to come up as well.
Well, maybe we can do some arm twisting.
It depends when you, are you just like board and your town administrator are open to?
Yep. Okay, uh, Richard, thank you and um there's nothing that we really, uh, the sixteenth. I'm not sure that there's anything that we can accomplish unless I get some draft in hand between now and then that you want to take a look at on that E code. But I, I won't expect you for the sixteenth.
No, I, and I would like, as soon as you get draft E code, I like somebody ship off the copy to me. I like to take a look at it. Even after my surgery, I'll be able to read, so.
Richard.
But.
Depends about how many pills you've had.
Well, I'm not sure how well I'll be able to read, but I will be able to read.
That's assuming you're not using your right hand for a magnifying glass. Okay, very good. So um, I'll get right on this tomorrow. And thank you. And we don't see you by the sixteenth. You have our uh best regards for speedy recovery.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Isn't there something about these consultant we have? One goes to Mexico and the other guy's gotta get his arm operated on. What's with you guys?
Well, problem is again, folks are not in the forties or fifties again, folks.
It's because you're retired and you can do what you want.
But um, I may comment somebody is, it seems like when you retire, you start falling apart.
Speak for yourself. I'm not falling apart.
Okay, Richard, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, goodnight. Um, I there was no building permits. There is no warrants. Any committee reports of any substance before we go to bed.
Uh, just a, just a question. I think it was at the last meeting that the committee voted to support, um, to have the planning board support the water, the drinking water protection grant that's um, happening. Uh, Paul, are you all set with that letter? Do you know where to send it and everything? If you haven't done that, let me know and I'll, I'll email you a few samples uh and where to send it.
Yeah, please do. You know, I gotta look over my notes. I, I completely forgot about that.
Okay, so uh, in, in just a quick update on that, it's moving along. We hope that'll be on the warrant for the May town meeting. CPC is disgusted in terms of the match that will be required from the town. Uh, CPC was a little unsure of their balances, you know, with the transition to the new accountant. Um, and so we're meeting again this uh, next Wednesday to clarify and probably vote on it as CPC. And then hopefully go on the warrant, but uh, it's moving along pretty well. Um, as far as uh, getting onto the warrant and getting the town to support that. So that's the report I have from, and it's not an open space committee project. It's a water commission project, but just open space committee is just being supportive of that and trying to help facilitate some of the little details that go along with it. Otherwise, I, I don't think I have any other reports.
Dan or Sarah?
I got nothing.
No, I don't have anything. We had one meeting for the housing production plan, um, but Ken's just working on a final draft. Which we haven't seen yet. So like he said, once we have that, that'll get passed on to the board.
There is one other, and that's the master plan implementation committee. We, we don't read, uh, meet very frequently anymore. We don't need to. I have reported on behalf of the planning board that, you know, we've been doing these bylaw reviews and that we've worked that you're working now with Tencomia and um, some of the parts that are the uh, planning board's responsibility. Many of the parts are covered under the, of the, you know, the bylaw reviews going forward. But basically, a lot has been accomplished and that's sort of the message, not just from the planning board start standpoint, but other things. So Chris is the chairperson of the master plan implementation committee. She had to submit something for the um, annual town report and um, you know, I think we should feel really good for the amount that's being accomplished in our town. Um, a lot of things, the Greenway and the various um, ad hoc committees that have been formed out of the plan, out of the select board with technology and with financial review, et cetera. So um, I, I think our town is kind of moving forward despite our many, many challenges. That's my message.
We've got some progressive groups working for sure.
Yep.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I.
Sarah and who's Cindy?
I think it was a mutual all at once. Yes.
Sarah, Sarah made the motion. Cindy's second in all in favor. Alright, have a good week and Cindy, I'll be expecting that memo from you and.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.